Good evening, I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-four, uh, two thousand twenty-five, sorry. You're changed. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels twenty-nine and three-twenty-nine and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Poplowski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled broadcast or meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-second. First item on the agenda is public participation. Tonight, we've not received any requests to speak at public participation, however, it is available to any and all residents that wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anyone wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled meeting. The next item on the agenda is chairperson and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Lindsay, yes?
If I can, Mr. Wensky, I do have an announcement for the community and for all of the members of the Shrewsbury community. I have decided that after two terms on the school committee, I'm not going to be running for reelection in this, for another term. By and large, I love serving on this committee. It has been an absolute joy, but some factors in my personal life have made it such that I just don't have the time to continue to commit to this and make it a little bit too difficult to manage. So I've enjoyed working with all of you very much. There's many more months of work still to do before the spring election, but I did certainly want to make that known to folks as we get, people start to ramp up to think about townwide elections. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And after careful consideration, I would like to announce that I have decided to run for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Great. All right. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. Briefly, just want to thank all of our educators and particularly our curriculum and instructional leaders for the work they did on the early release day this past Tuesday. Those are really extremely valuable days for us to advance our strategic priorities, as the school committee knows, whether that's our literacy work or other elements. And I know there was some excellent work that was done. So I just want to put, it's a lot of work to make sure that those are productive and thoughtful sessions for our staff. So thank you to all who were involved. I do want to make the community aware of something that I sent out an email about along with Ms. Malone, the Executive Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Phillips, our Director of Information Technology. We unfortunately are a district that's been affected by a global level cybersecurity incident involving the Power School Company. Power School is the system that we use for our student information system. There's also staff information that is in that program as well. And unfortunately, there was a bad actor, a hacker, who compromised through Power School. And to be very clear, this wasn't through the Shrewsbury system, and there's many districts across the nation and world, and also several here in Massachusetts were affected, some differently because it depended what type of data this, you know, actor grabbed from different folks, but they came through essentially Power School itself. Locally, we were able to confirm what data had been compromised and downloaded. I communicated to families and staff that that did include demographic data only. That includes names, addresses, phone numbers, email addresses, student ID numbers, and staff ID numbers, student birth dates included with that, which is obviously concerning. Before I go on to say what was absolutely not included, Power School has assured all of their customers, including us, we attended a webinar today, they'd communicated in writing, and now they had a webinar with their leadership team, that they are of the belief that all of this data that was downloaded actually has been destroyed. While it wasn't technically a situation where it was ransomware, it was an individual, but they ended up essentially paying that individual to destroy the data because that was the situation that they found themselves in. They have assured us that they don't anticipate any of that data continuing to exist outside of our system, that it has been irrevocably destroyed without having been replicated or disseminated. Power School is working with a cybersecurity technology company to monitor for that, to ensure that's the case. They're also working with federal agencies to identify those who were involved. In terms of our data, I mentioned what was affected. What was not affected were any passwords, no credit card information or payment system, legal documents used during student registration, photos, no educational data in student records, and no personnel data in staff records. Student health records were not included, although, again, in full transparency, there is a way in our system to put an alert in a student's record if they have, for example, a food allergy, like I have. That would be in their demographic data, and if that was there, that would have been part of it. Again, they believe that all this data has been destroyed at this time. As far as next steps, Power School continues to investigate this. They're going to complete an investigation. We'll keep all of their customers apprised of what that, how that is. And then they will be providing credit monitoring to all affected adults, and they'll provide identity protection services to all affected minors, which is in accordance with regulatory and contractual obligations. There will be more details to come on that, and we will certainly share that out with our parent and staff community as soon as we have that information. Our tech department suggests that, just as always, people should monitor their accounts. If you see any suspicious activity, you are, if staff members should report that to their school-based tech team. If, for parents and caregivers, they can send it to an email that was included in the email that was sent to them to make us aware. As always, be cautious of phishing attempts. If someone, if you have unexpected email or phone call requesting personal information or school information, be wary of that, and certainly you can always call us directly to find out if any requests are being made for, for information. This is obviously deeply concerning to us. You know, we, we work really hard around cybersecurity. School committee was very supportive last year of allowing us to add some additional resources. I am very pleased and confident with the level of work that we do as a school department, as well as our partnership with the town and Selco around cybersecurity. Unfortunately, this was an issue with the Power School Company, not with us locally, that has affected a lot of districts locally in different ways. So, we will continue to communicate about this, and in the email that was sent out, if there are further questions that people have, they're welcome to send an email to Katie and Phillips, our Director of Information Technology. So I wanted to be sure people were aware of that information that went out, and that is superintendent's report. See you.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is the SHS Student Advisory Committee Report. Under the Massachusetts Education Reform Act, school districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC is required to meet with the school committee during the year to review various issues of concern to the student body. This is the SAC's second presentation to the school committee this school year. Mr. Andrew Smith, Shrewsbury High School, social sciences teacher, serves as the faculty advisor to SAC and is here tonight as well. The agenda was enclosed in our packet, and I'd like to welcome the SAC to present to us tonight.
Hello, good evening. My name is Caroline Strickland, and I'm honored to serve as the Chairperson for the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee during the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five school year. Thank you for having us here tonight. My fellow members will introduce themselves.
I'm Noah Chong.
I'm Emmanuel Yu.
I'm Guy three Iyer.
I'm Kalpa Sango.
We will start with a section titled "Student Life." Throughout the year, various programs provide opportunities for students to learn about life after high school. The student body has also expressed discontent with certain material circumstances which school leaders and administration are working to solve.
As we approach the second semester, most seniors are finished with their college applications and beginning to receive decisions from schools. While some of us already know where we'll be going next year, the majority are still waiting for regular decision outcomes in the next months.
At this point in the year, freshmen have learned to navigate the school and how to balance their schoolwork with, and how to balance their schoolwork. And individual freshman homerooms have begun to develop their own traditions with the upperclassmen mentors through the student mentor volunteer program.
As discussed the last time we met, overcrowding in the school is still prevalent. Although many have gotten used to the issue of hallway congestion after the first semester, overcrowding still affects other aspects of school life. Before and after school-wide events, like the town hall meeting, moving in and out of the auditorium can slow down to a snail's pace. Along with this, during lunch periods, the lines for students who want to get to lunch can become quite long. This is often to the point where students choose to simply wait at a lunch table for the line to thin out, and these long waiting times only take away from our limited lunch periods. This is to the point where students often only have ten to fifteen minutes left to eat. Furthermore, some food options are entirely gone by the time students of the last lunch block arrive.
As the year continues, there are multiple chances for juniors and seniors to take the SAT. Recently, the December SAT occurred, and many students stated that they were nervous before taking it. After taking it, anxiety about their scores rose, but as various juniors have taken it for the first time, many have mentioned how they feel better prepared for the next SAT opportunities if they feel as though they want to take it again.
As we push towards mid-quarter, the junior class have grown accustomed to the high workload that is presented towards us. They also begin to realize that not only AP classes, but also honor-level classes have taken another step in difficulty. Many have begun to abandon their old procrastination habits and develop a better sense of responsibility and management. With this, the junior class is being more open-minded towards colleges, wanting the advisory class to be more focused on college applications. Not only that, but juniors have begun to ask for letters of recommendation for summary programs that colleges tend to provide.
Financial education. In the past couple of months, Shrewsbury High School has hosted two events focused on guiding the class of two thousand twenty-five through their new financial responsibilities. The first event was Financial Aid Night on November seventh, in which Ryan G. Forsyth, a volunteer for the Massachusetts Educational Financing Authority, presented Financial Aid one oh one. The program went over merit versus need-based aid, different sources of financial aid, as well as the process for submitting FAFSA in similar forms to universities. The second was, event was Financial Literacy, presented a presentation during the school day, introduced, that introduced seniors to financial planning and responsibility. Seniors learned how to properly use a credit card and save for retirement. Altogether, these two programs have provided valuable insight for both students and parents.
Lunch and Learn. Throughout the year, SHS hosts professionals in many fields during weekly lunch and learn sessions. During the lunch period, students are able to hear advice, perspectives, and experiences from people in specific career fields which they are interested in. Just last month, Shrewsbury hosted the Director of Immigration Services from UMass Chan Medical School, a physical therapist, and an applied scientist from Amazon. These opportunities allow the student body to explore possible career fields and gain more niche perspectives of people across the professional world.
Town meeting. Excuse me. On November twenty-sixth, the high school held its annual town meeting led by the student council president and Mr. Buzidlow. In addition to the usual bathroom and vaping complaints, students showed appreciation for new courses such as Intro to Animation and Linguistics II, aired concerns about changes in classes such as gym and the phone policy, and brought up requests relating to the food department and what's offered for breakfast and lunches. In specific, whole grain options at breakfast and alternative meals for students with food restrictions, both religious and nutritional, were the main concerns. Overall, students of all grades participated, making the, making the meeting a success.
Bathroom infrastructure. Bathroom infrastructure has become an increasing cause of frustration amongst the student body. In the girls' main street restrooms, at least one out of the seven stalls are inoperable on each floor. In a school as overcrowded as ours, this does lead to long lines and wait times during passing periods or even class time. Students also brought up the weak hand dryers, excessive gaps in stall doors, and toilet paper running out during town meeting. We understand that the infrastructure is under the control of the Public Building Department and are hoping to work with them to find a solution to these issues. Co-curriculars. Students continue to participate in the school community outside of the classroom.
Athletics. Many of the Shrewsbury Fall Team did well in their postseason. Boys and Girls Soccer, Field Hockey, and Vario progressed to the playoffs. Our cheerleading team claimed first in the league and became regional champions. Both golf and cross-country were able to move on to league whilst the crew team competed in state championships. Moving into the winter season, five hundred and forty-four athletes have registered as SHS athletes for various sports.
Theater. Two months ago, our school's musical arts department produced its first theatrical play of the year. In the romantic tragedy, Eurydice, our theater crew was able to amaze its audience with love, laughs, and misfortune. Our chorus and theater director, Mr. La Pomato, along with forty-three of our own SHS students, were able to create an amazing production that deserves praise all around. We now look forward to our upcoming spring musical, Chicago.
Club events. Clubs have begun to carry out events within and outside the school. The Vietnamese Student Association, aided by the Hindu Student Association, hosted a movie night, as did Model UN. On November thirtieth, the Asian Culture Club traveled to Boston for a day where they shopped and ate in Chinatown, and today, DECA competed at Nichols College for the first competition this year, taking home fourteen first-place finishes out of the twenty-plus categories.
Events at SHS. Shrewsbury High School and associated programs host a variety of events that enhance the student experience.
Kids Night Out. The student council hosted November and December's Kids Night Out. With the help of the Spanish and French National Honor Society, the kids were able to have fun, let loose, and enjoy activities like face painting, art and crafts, board games, and more. Around two hundred and ninety kids from ages eleven, ages four to eleven attended. The November event yielded a profit of roughly five thousand two hundred dollars.
Field trips. On November seventh, sixty-three AP English language students went to Walden Pond in Concord, Massachusetts alongside Mrs. Palazzo. They learned about the teachings of Henry David Thoreau, and by walking through nature in the ways he used to, they got a glimpse into his view on nature and the transcendentalism movement. Additionally, a handful of science classes went to the Boston Museum of Science on November twenty-second. Lastly, French classes attended Boston in order to immerse themselves in the rich French culinary culture within our community. Many note that there is an enriching benefit of taking advantage of the literary and historical culture around us, and we are thankful that the school supports field trips such as these.
Honor Society inductions. On November twenty-fifth, ninety-six students from the class of two thousand twenty-five were inducted into the Social Science, English, and Science National Honor Societies. These honor societies will perform various acts of community service and academic assistance throughout the year. We look forward to seeing what these driven students have planned. Additionally, on March fourth, one hundred fifty students will be inducted into the Math National Honor Society.
Fundraising and charity. Student Council held a fundraising fundraiser called Coins for a Cure that raised almost six hundred dollars, which went towards funding for the Breast Cancer Research Foundation. Then, over the weeks preceding Thanksgiving break, Shrewsbury High School held a Thanksgiving food drive. Overall, the students and staff brought in a little over three hundred and fifty items to donate to Saint Anne's Church on Route Nine in Shrewsbury to aid the local struggling families within our community. After that, the Helping Hands Club hosted a fundraiser, Toys for Tots, which helped donate thirty toys and some clothes to Saint Anne's Human Services and Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. We are proud that our school and the people within it continuously help our local community in various ways.
Winter concert. Last month, on December tenth and eleventh, the school's music department performed its second concert this year. Over the course of these two nights, over twenty selections of music were performed by nine different music groups. These include musical pieces ranging from the movie The Polar Express to vibrant tangos. From the two hundred fifty SHS musicians that performed, audience members were able to enjoy colorful, energetic, or winter-themed music before their upcoming December break.
Thank you for your support of the Student Advisory Committee. We will now be open for any questions.
Great. Thank you so much for the report. Colleagues, questions or comments?
One question I have around, well, you did mention, you know, when I read your report before the meeting, you talked about certain material circumstances. Did, did you cover that in what you just gave us, or is there other issues that we should be aware of?
The majority of that was referencing the bathroom infrastructure and the food offered by the school being accessible to people that are gluten-free, some with celiac, or those with religious restrictions on what they can eat. That's what it was referencing.
Okay. And I thank you for bringing to our attention the bathroom infrastructure, the issues in the bathrooms. And I think I would ask Dr. Sawyer to make sure that Public Buildings knows about this issue. It's the first time I have heard of it, and again, my children are long gone, but we shouldn't be having these types of issues at the high school. I know it is, there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of people using these facilities, but we want to make sure that they're safe and in the condition that they should be for all students. So thank you for bringing us to our attention.
Maybe if I could ask Mr. Buzidlow, I know there's been some progress made already. He could maybe comment for the record.
Yeah, sure.
Put you on the spot.
Yeah, give me a pull trigger. I'll just get you. I'll stand by the students. Yeah, so as you know, Mr. O'Connell serves as Assistant Principal for our building operations. He's, works as liaison with Joel Manzi, who's our main person from the building department that works within our building. So he works with them regularly around heating, cooling, snow removal, anything that happens within the building. So, Mr. O'Connell and Mr. Manzi work closely together, and Mr. O'Connell's been in contact with him, particularly around, I believe, Carolyn and I spoke today around the hand dryers and the volume of air pressure coming out of the hand dryers in the bathroom, which was brought up at town meeting. All things that can be corrected. I think Mr. Manzi's working on those and has been working on those since town meeting. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further comments, Ms. Semen.
I want to appreciate you all and the time you put into preparing the report. I had, I know it's been on our list of, of things to sort of tackle is, is addressing the variety of food choices. And so it's not the first time we've heard it, but I'm glad to kind of hear it brought, brought up again, and obviously food's important, right? And, and both socially and the amount of time and the sort of the logistics of food, but also the, the quality and variety. So, thank you for keeping that on the top of our, our minds. I wonder if you could say just a little bit more about the financial literacy program for seniors. We've certainly heard that lots of young people leaving high school today struggle to know how to write a check and take care of some other basic things. And so can you just describe a little more about sort of how that program was run? Is it sort of an assembly-based program, that all the seniors were in at once, or a more smaller group? Or how did, how did that get structured? And maybe a little bit more, sometimes when we do required trainings for everybody, those aren't always as welcome. So I'm kind of curious of a student perspective for those of you who are in it, about sort of what you took away. I'd love to hear a little more, too. Because even good intentions about programming and we're always, we always kind of have tweaks and how to improve things.
I can say for the second event, the Financial Literacy presentation, that was every member of the senior class, I believe, went to some version of it, but it was spread out throughout the day because the presentation room can only handle so many students. I have not heard anyone express negative sentiment about being at the presentation. I think part of that was the person that ran it was incredibly engaging, and it was, it was an enjoyable presentation. We learned a lot about the necessity to save. A lot of it was revolved around make sure that you're conscious of what you're going to have to prepare yourself for, of retirement, for any downs that you may find career-wise in your path. I did not personally attend the Financial Aid Night, which was earlier on. Did any of?
I did, yeah.
You did?
It was a pretty all-encompassing presentation. It wasn't mandatory. You could attend to after-school seniors and their families. It was directed towards, but I think it was open to juniors and sophomores who wanted to go as well. I mean, like Caroline explained in her piece on it, it was mainly just talking about things like the FAFSA and how paying for college works. Certain, specifics in terms of who has to pay for what, who's eligible for what kinds of aid, and what colleges are looking for in those forms.
Sure. And your perspective of the financial literacy, though, like during the school day program, did you find that to be a useful?
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was interesting. I thought it was helpful. I thought it was fun. Everyone else that I've talked to about it felt the same way.
There's a lot of important information. We try to figure out how to get into a relatively limited school day. So, thank you. I'm glad, glad to hear that, that we are taking that on, and I certainly share, Ms. Fritz, your thoughts about the, about the buildings. We historically hear lots of good things about how we try to maintain the buildings. That doesn't mean there isn't a lot of wear and a lot of students moving through there. So thank you for, for bringing that to our attention.
Great. Further comments, Ms. Sheen?
Thank you for the presentation. Very helpful, as always. I did have a couple of questions about the lunch, and you're saying that there's not enough food available for the, for students in the later lunch. Is that true?
So, what that is referring to, a lot of times, there are different options for lunch, of course. There's sandwiches, there's breakfast bags, which are set aside, made ahead of time, and then there's the hot lunches that are provided. A lot of people can't have all of these options, either for allergy reasons, health content, or just preference. So, by the end of certain lunch periods and by the end of the school day, they may have a lunch option available, but it may only be the hot lunch. And let's say that you planned on having a certain sandwich that is offered that school day. It's unavailable to students.
Great, thank you. And can you talk a little bit about the lines and just, so it's, is it every lunch period that, or is it just certain lunch periods?
It's a volume issue, definitely. I mean, I'm sure, you know, after lunch was made free, there's more people going in than ever before. School's already overcrowded. Definitely handling way more lunches than had been conceived of in the construction or building of the school. But that does mean that people, a lot of people I know, just sit down and wait until the line dies down, and then they go up and get their lunch. But at that point, there's not a whole lot of time left.
And the other thing is that, like, there is always someone from the lunch department who is stopping people and limiting the amount of people within the actual area to get lunch. And so there's a line that always forms outside of that area to get lunch, and they only let, like, say thirty people in at once. And there is a quarter of the entire school within each lunch, like five hundred people, and they're letting thirty people in every single time.
To avoid congestion.
Yeah. And that just causes this really long line that seems really intimidated, intimidating to students. And so they just don't want to go into that line and have to wait there for a long time. And that's why they stay out of it and then join later on, because at that point, there's not much to, like, block them. And so they can just walk straight and get whatever they need and go.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Other comments?
I think, and I wonder for all the students who are just to know, that part of our package around MSBA and the school expansion did involve looking at sort of the lunch and food service. We recognize free lunches has a huge change, right? And the size of the school. So you have two, two pressing points on what that school is sort of designed for and what we thought lunches would look like. And so, while that's many years away and you will all be gone, for, for folks to know, like, that I think is a piece that we can, we can address as we look in that sort of the design and through that feasibility process. I want to say, Dr. Sawyer, that I'm saying that correctly, though, that, that lunch component, that food services sort of space is one of the things that we entered in as part of the package.
And if, you know, ultimately, the town meeting approves moving forward with the feasibility study, that will be, you know, MSBA requires you to go through everything, I would say from soup to nuts, to stay on the theme of. They really require you to do.
Allergies, Dr. Sawyer, allergies.
Legume, though, not a nut, technically. But in terms of the, you know, will be required to look at, you know, they, if MSBA partners with us on a high school expansion project, they want to be sure that we're, they're investing their dollars in something that's going to make sure it's responsive to the true number of students and the, and the conditions. And I think that, you know, with the points the students are making is that it's not only about the fact that it was built, you know, for only so many students in the first place, very many fewer than what it, or number who are actually there, but the volume of lunches is just tremendous. And I, you know, I know that our students appreciate that our, our food services workers do a tremendous job trying to respond to this level of demand. They can't provide food in the same way they did before that program changed. And I know that Mr. Girardi reminded me in our meeting the other day that part of our strategic work is we're looking to bring a consultant on in this winter, I think February is the target, to actually look at food choices, food offerings, everything from cultural to religious to allergies, to all the kinds of things that, to make our food program as responsive as we can and as high-quality as we can, given all the different parameters that we have to follow, because it's a heavily regulated program by the federal government and state government. And it's also a ton of demand. So that's something where we've been adjusting to, but we want to do the best job we can, it's possible. So continuing to get feedback on what the, the pain points are is really helpful to us as we do that work, and certainly student. And certainly, student voice will be part of that work when a consultant comes on board to take a look, along with our leadership of the Food Services Department, in terms of Ms. Nichols and her team. So, we appreciate that feedback.
Definitely. I want to thank you all for the presentation, the preparation, the level of detail, the transparency, everything that you present to us on every meeting. It's very important to this board to hear from you and to hear the voice of the students. So, thank you so much for the work on that. Any further comments?
Just a couple of quick things. I did want to mention the presenter around financial literacy is a gentleman named Eric Smith. He's known as the Financial Literacy Coach. He's actually, has a national profile. He's worked not only with high schools, but with college athletes, NFL players. My understanding, he was quite engaging. I do want to thank Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, and in particular, Mr. Michael Hale, because they sponsored him coming and speaking and presenting to the senior class. And they've been a terrific partner with us about that. We have another great partner, Central One Federal Credit Union, that has continued to offer a program, a multi-day program in the spring for the senior class on financial literacy that gets a little bit more in-depth, you know, going through multiple sessions. We know it's, it's an important topic. We've done some work over the years to introduce more of that. We have a course in our program of studies now that is an elective that students can also take. But I know recently, there's been a couple of articles in the Boston Globe about financial literacy that, and our former colleague, Dr. Dale McGee, who was previously on the school committee, was very interested in this topic. I know he reached out to the committee and to me to make us aware of that. And we'll, we'll need to continue to look. In our five-year strategic plan, I believe there's some language that can, certainly our previous one, but looking at, again, life skills and things that we can make our educational program as responsive as possible to students' needs. Just like with lunch, where there's volume, there's a volume of certain things that students want to take in terms of, in time, and things that we're mandated to make sure we're providing. And so, without the school day and school year getting longer, and you, those of you who are seniors, that doesn't matter to you. Those who are not seniors, I'm not sure you want to have a longer school year next year or longer days. But, and again, those are all things that are multi-year planning pieces. But we have an awful lot stuffed into our education, and yet, there are things we need to continue to look at. Like, are there things we should be doing differently as far as topics or providing so that students are leaving their high school experience in a, with those kind of key skills and understandings? I also will, will mention, Mr. Bzidlo reminded me that since Shrewsbury High School was built and opened in two thousand and two, several years into the school's existence, the serving area and the cafeteria was actually expanded because the student population had been growing even at that point. You know, without some major additions, it's hard to do anything different. But it's actually larger now than what it was originally built, believe it or not. So, thankfully, that happened at that point as well. But again, really appreciate all the feedback and information. And certainly, I know Mr. Bzidlo, Mr. O'Connell, and then Mr. Girardi here this evening will continue to work with our Public Buildings Department to make sure any infrastructure issues, particularly in the restrooms, are addressed as quickly as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is under curriculum. It is a report on proposed changes for the SHS Program of Studies. Each year, the high school leadership team makes recommendations for adjustments to the course offerings based on a variety of factors. Mr. Bzidlo and Shrewsbury High School staff will highlight these proposed changes for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, which are articulated in our enclosed packet. After hearing questions and feedback from the committee, any necessary adjustments will be incorporated into the final draft of the proposed program of studies, which will be included in materials for the next meeting when the committee will be asked to vote to approve documents. So, just like to welcome Mr. Bzidlo, along with Maureen Monopoly, who's Assistant Principal at Shrewsbury High School, and Dr. Erica Pratt, as well, who's our Director of Physical Education, Health, and Family Consumer Services. Welcome.
Thanks for having us. I'm trying to connect to the selectmen's room screen here. And of course, I knew this would happen. There we go. Great. Thanks for having us tonight. And it gives me great pleasure to share the kind of the work that our directors have done, along with Mrs. Monopoly, around taking a thorough review of our program, which, as you know, is probably about a hundred pages long. We meet with each individual director. We take a, we look at the class size report, the student enrollment request from the previous year. We look forward in terms of what type of progressive programming we may want to propose to you. We try and adjust our programming based upon what students' feedback is relative to their courses. So, we'll walk you through what we've done this fall, meeting with our directors and having those conversations to build out the schedule for the following year and work through our course selection process. Most importantly, one, and this will happen, I think, you know, we're meeting tomorrow about this. Dr. Sawyer, myself, and Mrs. Monopoly, and I believe Mrs. Clouder will meet and talk about the new MCAS requirement as a result of the ballot initiative in the fall and the change that we've had by eliminating the competency determination through ballot, I think as ballot two, right, that measure, which eliminated students' need to pass MCAS in order to receive a competency determination from the state. So, I've taken the language here from, that came from a state advisory on November sixth. It came out early. They updated again on December eleventh. I think they've had another update. So, we're going to work through in the coming weeks to the, I think, the policy subcommittee around what we might want to propose and what you, as a committee, would want to have as language around competency determination in certifying people's graduation, meeting graduation requirements. But this is language I took from the DESE advisory at the time and incorporated into a program of study under the graduation requirements. And we hope to be able to provide you in the coming weeks some more language that we can look forward to and place within probably a school committee policy and also local documents such as a program of studies. So, basics of framework around a minimum of a local requirements of a hundred and five credits. And then, meeting come baseline subject areas around English, mathematics, science, and biochem, physics. And then, also, there's a PE requirement within that grid that will be in the program of studies. So, I'm going to walk everyone through. So, if you're at home, this is going to be great, because you get to see kind of the timeline of what we do in terms of how course selection works and leading up to students and the construction of the master schedule. So, on February fourth, I believe that's an early release day, we're going to do wholesale presentations in the auditorium for grades nine, ten, and eleven. And students will be given how to register for their classes on Power School. That same evening, we have advanced placement night for, for any student and parent in grade, currently in grades ten and eleven that would like to attend or are interested in advanced placement programming and want to learn more, are encouraged to attend that and should attend that. On Friday of that week, we have school and counselor parent connection in the bent presentation room at eight o'clock to review kind of the course selection process. And then, our school counselors actually go to Oak Middle School and present to each Oak Middle School team around programming and what course selection should look like. Teachers then start to place their recommendations within Power School, so students can actually see what teachers will recommend leveling for and, or what level course students should be recommended for for the prior, the next year. And then, students begin to register for courses from February seventeenth to February, February twentieth, and that happens over February vacation. The green is really important for parents. Parents will need to click and sign off that they reviewed their student's course selections, so we're, we're clear of what the course load will be. So, we'll have to get people in the Power School. We'll send communications out about that. And then, the two weeks, it gets really intense in terms of counselors meeting with every student within their caseload to talk about their selections and make sure that they have everything scheduled the way they need to. Intensive, very short window. Counselors will meet with over two hundred students individually to make sure that it's squared away. Then, we continue on. We build, we, we, students register. We take that information out of Power School. We get course tallies, how many students want each particular course. Then, we work with directors to set how many sections of each course we'll run. And then, we begin to allocate FTE, and that's where we begin to build class size. All parents, students should, if they don't agree with a teacher around their placement, would have course placement meetings completed by March twenty-eighth. And then, what we end up doing is meeting with directors and determining sections, determining teaching assignments for the following year, spend a week of really intensive data entry into Power School. And then, we spend about a week, two weeks, April vacation. Mrs. Wenwill, our Assistant Principal of Student Services, will begin to construct the master schedule. She calls it the build, and hopefully, by the twenty-eighth, we'll then start to load students in. And we spend a couple of weeks trying to balance any numbers within courses, resolve room, or other conflicts, and just kind of clean up the schedule generally. And then, she turns the schedule, master schedule, and individual schedules over to school counselors, who will then follow up with students again to have one-on-one meetings or resolve any conflicts to ensure they have schedules set and they're scheduled for the appropriate amount of credits. In years past, I provided a slide on this kind of spine of a long horizontal. It might be better for parents to kind of see this. I could post this on the website tomorrow, too. Important for parents, too, is we'll have the AP night, which I discussed. We have the school and parent connection on February seventh. For eighth-grade Oak Middle School parents, we'll have our curriculum night on February eleventh. And Mrs. Burek, I believe, has put this in her weekly post to parents. If not, we will certainly get that out. There's a snow date of February fifteenth, and that's parents-only. They come in and meet with our directors, talk about the programming, walk through the course selection process, talk about the types of courses and pathways students can take. And then, again, counselors will visit Oak again on February tenth, eleventh, twelfth to do some of the work down there. All right. So, I think this is still me, right? Special program. Thanks. Okay. You'll see within the program, we added the internship. And as we build our innovation career pathways and internal pathways, we're looking to continue to build upon working with Mrs. Arias, our Career and Technical Education Coordinator, around pathways, programming, and internships. When we look at our student schedules, they're already jammed. So, meeting with Dr. Pratt, we had some conversations about how we meet the state requirement for physical education and also trying to provide more blocks or opportunities for students to participate in internship, because it's really a priority for us. So, we can eliminate students who participate in the internship will only be required to take one semester of PE their senior year versus two semesters. We still fulfill the requirement by the state, but it'll open up a block for people in internships, hopefully, continue to build those partnerships we have with industry members within the community and area. We, we had job shadowing in our program of studies and weren't really great at this. And it was a one-day experience that we're potentially awarding credit for. So, Mrs. Arias made, when we met Mrs. Arias around her experiences, we made the recommendation to eliminate credit offering, because it really didn't match anything that we, that corresponded with credits. And then, she created a standardized process for students to follow when they do the job shadowing. And she's going to manage that as we go along, so that those recommendations coming from her, which I think is a great, great recommendations. And additionally, we had cooperative work study where students can work, receive credit for working outside the school day. We found that we're trying to work, have students work and employ that are during the school day, during a class time. So, students could leave school to go to their place of employment and come back to school. Right now, currently, we have some of those students doing that, but we also have students that work at nights and weekends for that credit, too. So, we're trying to tighten that up a little bit. And just, again, suggestions from assistant principals, school counselors, and Mrs. Arias around that. All right. I'll turn it over now to Dr. Pratt and the changes for Family Consumer Science, proposed changes.
Thank you. Okay. Changes for our Family and Consumer Science Department include, first one, Foods of the World. The Foods of the World course will be, will not be offered during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, but will instead be replaced by the Mediterranean Cuisine course this upcoming year. And these two courses will continue to alternate each year. So, that's standard. Next, we, the Leadership in Cooking class, which is a fully-inclusive peer mentorship course, will now include the prerequisite of focus on foods or a teacher recommendation. This change has been made in order to ensure that the leadership students have acquired knowledge and skills of kitchen safety and general cooking skills from previous classes in the Family and Consumer Science program in order to assist other students. Next, a new and exciting addition to the Family and Consumer Sciences program is the Advanced Early Childhood Education Course. This course is designed to be an extension of the existing Early Childhood Education Course and is intended to prepare students with skills and abilities to instruct in early childhood settings. Additionally, this course is part of the Childcare and Child Development Pathway that provides opportunities to students interested in careers related, but not limited to childcare workers, preschool teachers, or childcare center directors. This course provides students opportunities to apply skills and knowledge of the principles of early childhood education in a practical setting. And students will focus on developing lesson plans and creating learning opportunities for early elementary-age students in preschool or extended day and enrichment programs. And that's all for Family Consumer Science. Next section is Health and Physical Education. We have changes to the language of the Foundations of Physical Education course, and we changed that to Leadership in Physical Education. The change is intended to reflect the true nature of that course, whereas general education students participate as peer mentors and activity leaders with their special education peers. Additionally, it is hoped that this title will change, and this title change will encourage students that have an interest in leadership or working with adapted populations to enroll in this class. Next, we have a new elective course titled Officiating, which will be added for fall of two thousand and twenty-five. This course has been developed to meet the need for training qualified officials and referees due to a national shortage within youth and high school athletics. This innovative hybrid-style course will be offered as an elective option for eleventh and twelfth-grade students. Anecdotal reports have indicated that other schools in Massachusetts have also had great success with implementing this course, and it has resulted in students being hired for youth sporting events and has, and also giving them a greater appreciation for sportsmanship. The study of various sports and their rules, such as soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, football, volleyball, basketball, et cetera, according to the National Federation of State High School Associations presented, and students will be eligible to take officiating exams aligned with their sport of choice at the culmination of the course. This course will fulfill one semester of our Level Two Physical Education requirement. And lastly, a next new elective titled Sport Management and Athletic Leadership will be offered next fall for eleventh and twelfth, twelfth-grade students. The rationale for this course is to provide students with exposure to careers related to athletics and leadership. This course will focus on special topics within sports management and athletic leadership. Sample topics can include or will include athletic management and leadership, athletic training, sports nutrition, sports psychology, strength training and conditioning, film and video production, as well as coaching and fundraising. And due to our geographic location in central Massachusetts, students will have opportunities to collaborate with local colleges and universities or professional or semi-professional athletic teams and will complete their culminating portfolio project for credit. This course will fulfill one semester of the Level Two Physical Education requirement. And that's all for our departments. Thank you.
Great. Okay, the next portion. For our Technology, Media, and Business Department, we have a couple proposals. We'd like to add a course called Introduction to Computer Applications. And this would, is a course that would focus on developing computer skills that the students can apply in other academic courses or to continue into other technology courses. Students would learn about file management, word processing, spreadsheet creation, and troubleshooting, just to name a few of the skills that they would focus on. This course would meet for three days out of the seven-day cycle, opposite of PE or health. But it's an opportunity for students to really start developing those skills that we, we find are kind of some gaps with the students. Second proposal we have is to adjust the title of Web Design to Introduction to Web Design to clarify that this is an introductory course for the students. In our Performing Arts Department, we have several changes that we'd like to propose. Voice and Acting in Theater Arts Two will not be offered in the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. Instead, theatrical design will be offered. We would like to offer a Guitar Two class as an extension to our Intro to Guitar course. A couple courses will not be offered due to low enrollment, and those include guitar ensemble and songwriting. And again, because of low enrollment, but also with songwriting, there's a lot of duplication of content with our techniques of Music Theory One. So, we'd like to eliminate those two courses. And then, we would also like to propose some minor language changes in wind ensemble, concert band, jazz band, to clarify the performance expectations with those courses. In our Science and Engineering Departments, we would like to remove a course called Exploration of Science Concepts. This course has not run for the past couple of years, and we feel that we should pull it out of the program of studies. For our second proposal, we would like to revise the sequence of courses in the engineering pathway. Currently, the sequence involves the Introduction to Engineering Design. The students would then take Principles of Engineering, and then, the third course they would take is Computer Integrated Manufacturing. And we would like to propose to change this to Introduction to Engineering Design. And we would like to propose to change this to introduction to engineering design into computer inter- integrated manufacturing and then have the students take the principles of engineering. And that's to support the students with um, developing their math skills for the principles of engineering course. Um, and just to give a stronger foundation so that they can find more success with that. And then um, the final changes we would like to propose for this department includes um, just updating um, the course descriptions for honors chem, AP chem, human body systems and principles of engineering. Just to better reflect the curriculum mapping. Um, the, we have another proposal for our social science department. We would like to change the name of the um, course called uh, local and global studies to just global studies. And that is just to reflect the, the student interest in the um, studying on uh, or focusing on a course that studies on global studies um, or global issues. And then our visual arts department, we have several um, changes we would like to propose for course titles. The first would be our um, digital studio art course. We would like to change that to iPad studio art using pro, um, Procreate. Um, the second course title we would like to change is digital art and design to introduction to Photoshop and graphic design. And then we would also like to change the course title of sculpture and installation to sculpture and three D design. Um, and then the final change we propose is to add an honors level for ceramics two and ceramics three for those students.
Yeah, we've seen and, and just if you don't mind. We've seen a shift in terms of like, how do we communicate the content within the visual arts program to people who have very short attention spans and want to see what's in that title and what they're going to quote unquote do, right? So, part of this is working with Mrs. LeBlanc around how do we kind of communicate to students like we're going to be doing, these are the skills that we're using iPad studio, using art Procreate for digital art studio because we have to actually read the course description and get through that. We'd like our students to do that. Not everyone does that. So we try to put the, the work within that. What's interesting too around the second course change titled on digital art and design to introduction to Photoshop and graphic design, we're potentially looking at uh, building out internships, potentially on graphic design and advertising. So there is this mindset where we're looking at all these courses of what potential opportunities we have for internship or providing students some career exploration or experience prior to uh, leaving the high school in a field that they may have some interest or would never be exposed to if they didn't have that. So, those are some of the changes within that, some of the rationale behind the visual arts changes. And the final, I'll take the final change, uh, proposed changes around world language is to add uh, an honors level to our linguistics strand. There's been a demand for that and Mr. Almeida has heard from students that that would be benefit them or might attract more students. So we'd like to put that in the program and then see what we have for enrollment. So, we're happy to answer any questions may have. Uh, thanks for your time.
Great. Thanks for the report. Colleagues, questions, comments, Mr. Fritz?
Um, thank you for your report. Um, I have one question when it comes to when students are picking up their courses, especially our eighth graders that are moving over to the high school. Are they following the same timeline in terms of you have an eighth grader that decides they want to take a certain math class? Parent says, yep, I agree with that. It might change based off of what they were recommended for. Are they, are those students meeting with high school counselors to go over like changes to their schedule or are we doing that at Oak with the Oak counselors?
Yeah, so typically what we found was um, we tried to make this a little easier for the folks at Oak, right? Uh, we, we know the program, so that's why we made an adjustment. Mrs. Flynn, our director of school counseling, recommended we make an adjustment to send our counselors down to explain each team kind of what the course selection process would, would look like. And then they were, department directors work with individual teachers in the leadership team at Oak to articulate what the levels would be and how recommendations work. So, uh, the short answer is once students make those recommendations, and it's a little bit later, right? So their, their process happens a little bit later than ours in terms of um, course selection, all that. But there was, those recommendations are pretty solid as we start to build a schedule. There might be some adjustments, but the Oak teachers are pretty uh, they're pretty spot on in terms of recommendation. We may have some variation here or there, but generally they're, they've been really good at understanding what the expectations are and the skills needed or required to, to meet the standards at the high school. So, we've had some success, I'd say a lot of success with that, but there's been outliers when we had to make adjustments either late in the year or when students enroll and we find out they're actually more advanced, we have to advance students. Or someone's been in an advanced course and we have to kind of bring it back because they don't, they haven't met the standard. So, we make those adjustments. So truly though, a handful of kids each year.
Uh, thank you very much for the report. I think the timeline that you set forth is extremely helpful, especially to families uh, watching. Um, a couple of questions. Um, the first one about the um, new gym um, requirement being let, you know, alleviated so that um, students can pursue an internship opportunity in twelfth grade. Is that only for students that are in pathways programming or is that for any twelfth grader?
Yeah, so priority for internships are given to pathway students first. And then if we have uh, bandwidth and space to do that, then we'll certainly fill those out with students who might want to pursue an interest, but definitely priority for pathways. And then students in grade twelve who might want to take an intern or look for an internship or might have an uh, uh, an idea of what they want to do. I think we really have to focus on having the school manage the internships too and having uh, articulated agreements with those people, those employers or the, the sites that we'll visit. But again, it's evolving still. Um, so we have to see how we work through, but we won't have pathway students reach the internship level until I think next year is would be the first pathway class through. So next year we would have the opportunity with some of our business partners to put seniors on internships.
Another, I have another question. Um, the other question I had was with regard to the uh, computer applications class. And I know at a prior meeting, I think it was expressed that there was some space constraints around computer lab space and whether I, I fully support the, the, the class. It sounds excellent and a great opportunity for kids to um, really explore some great computer skills. That would be helpful not only in school, but also in their, you know, futures, career, college, et cetera. But um, do we have the space to offer that? Um, you know, where, yeah, where?
Such a good question. Um, we think we do, right? So we looked at preliminary numbers in terms of we'd have to, the challenge is building the schedule, finding out what the constraints are and then seeing what student enrollment is and how much we can peel away from those computer labs. Uh, we originally started with six computer labs. When the high school opened uh, twenty-odd years ago, we're down to four. Of those four, they're pretty much scheduled out every day with classes. Um, when we looked a little bit more closely at potential classes we could move, we could move some classes out of computer labs that aren't necessarily computer-based classes. And given that proposal's a three, uh, seven day um, uh, course, we could probably get potentially ten sections of that course, potentially. But we'd have to move the teacher from that, wh- whatever room or computer lab that is to a different place within the building, which we'd have to find out. And I know at the class size report, you look at all the, the blocks we have with red and yellow and green. They'd have to move to one of those green or yellow blocks within that framework, which could be anywhere in the building. It would be inconvenient certainly for the teacher. Um, but we do have, I think we can squeeze some space out. Again, the next question is what would student enrollment look like? And then we have to make decisions about how many sections we want to run based upon student requests and also offering the programming. Right now we have three point two FTEs within that department. Uh, and that includes our project lead the way, computer science one, computer science two, cybersecurity. Um, uh, a number of other uh, introductory to web design, introduction to web design and our business courses. So I mean, the, there's not a lot of room for, we have to make decisions when student, student course requests come in and what we want to run. But we do have some space, but it'd be, it's a puzzle. We'll have to figure it out.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, thank you also for the, all, all of the work. Obviously in addition to a larger kitchen area, we need some more computer spaces as we think about the future uh, and, and design. But I would want to just sort of a, um, sort of an appreciation and then two, two questions. One, I really appreciate how, how thoughtful I think the team has been across all the different disciplines as we think about what, what, what career and technical education sort of looks like and the different ways you see that embodied, whether it's an officiating course, which is like, oh, that's so interesting and there's filling a need that we have in the community today and potentially kids over summers or on weekends or Saturday mornings, someone needs to ref um, indoor soccer. So, I think that's great. Um, uh, but also as you think about things like building out graphic design. So I just wanted to appreciate how much you, you sort of see that really being embodied in all, in all the different subject areas and it's not really limited to just like, we're, you know, we're going to go hardcore in engineering and that's the only way that this is going to happen, but it's the, you know, advanced cha- childhood and child development. So thank, thank you for that. Um, I think it's important when we look at the graduation requirement that I don't, I, that it's a really, really important topic and we got to get it right. And that obviously though, the way the ballot initiative, initiative happened, a lot of, a lot of sort of come back to districts to, to think about that issue. And certainly for me, that sort of should live while it should be referenced in the program of study is really about our school committee policy. And I, I just looked while we were sitting here and our graduation requirement policy hasn't been updated since two thousand and three. But not had, not a change during that time. Obviously something significant here. So, it's probably for the, for the time being, as we, as we, as we look at that and try to get that right. And the DESI language and even some of that suggested, some of the syntax confuses me as, as proposed. I know you said there, there are multiple iterations coming, but that we make sure that policy is sort of what is guiding us and then the, and then the various places where it needs to show up for students and, and families. And uh, the program of studies clearly isn't an, an important one. Um, when it comes to the schedule, I have a, a sort of a maybe, maybe an, maybe an unhelpful question, but as a, as a family and a parent, why is it that you go through all that effort and you have the schedule set, but the kids don't get them until the day they show up at school? Why don't we get them a couple of weeks earlier? Like with the anxiety, and I know we're not, I know not all school districts do it this way. And so, you must have good reasons and maybe you could just tell us because certainly was a parent of some.
Sure.
I'm staring at a couple of high school students that are like, why can't we know a couple of weeks ahead and anxiety and nowhere to go in the building and all that other stuff. And so, help us understand if you don't mind, uh, because you're, you're doing work for nine months on it.
Yes, yeah. Si- simply it's like the urgent urban legend of who you get for a teacher. And then the jockeying of, I can't have that teacher, so I'm going to call someone and try and make a change. And we're inundated with that even at the beginning of the year. Um, and the amount of work that goes into it, I think that's a challenge. I think there certainly is some, I understand that perspective. Um, but I think when we, as soon as we, and it happens every year and I think people on the committee probably have heard this or seen this from their own children, if someone finds a backdoor and somehow, and all of a sudden it's like, oh, everyone knows what their schedule is. And call, literally calls start coming in for the moment that someone finds a backdoor of how they saw something in power school that's still not set, but it's like, well, I can't have Mr. Bizidlo again because, or I can't have Mr. Bizidlo because I heard bad things about him or I heard he's really hard. Like that stuff happens.
Sure.
So that's generally, that's really why we do it, quite frankly, yeah.
I think, I think a, a perspective on that, and that's a legitimate one, is that that's true, that's true as you start the first weeks of school, right? And the kids are, kids are doing it. That's true no matter when, when the courses come out, right? That people are going to have that feeling. And so, um, as we balance and think about sort of how to make sure our kids feel comfortable and supported, is that, is that the right balance for Evermore? And sort of the, I, I don't know that, I don't have a right answer on that. Um, I've got a couple of kids who are like, why does it happen that way? And I couldn't give them a good explanation, other than I thought people probably complain a lot. And, and I get that. And that's the society that we live in and then people think I want, I want something different. But um, when we think and, and look at how other school districts do it, is it the right, is it the right way for Evermore? Um, so I'm, thank you for the answer. I appreciate it.
And just, you know, to follow on the MCAS piece, thank you for mentioning that because I think people in the community don't really understand, you know, that was the state competency, but we do have a local competency that we are expecting students to meet. And it is an important update to our policy that we make sure everybody, we know what it is and that everyone else understands what it is as a graduation requirement. So thank you for mentioning that. I love the changes, the officiating, that's, you know, you're adding something that it kind of goes to the CTE. This is something a student can get this and be able to earn money officiating on the weekends. So thank you for doing that. Um, my question is around the students and the needs, because we're looking at education's changing and courses are changing, how we're delivering them are changing. Are there courses that we're not able to add that students really want? Either um, we just don't have the, more around, it's more around capacity. We just don't have room at the high school. Are you hearing from students that there's, I would love to have more business courses or more, you know, whatever in engineering. We just don't have the space. Are we limited with that?
No, I, I think so. And I think we know that when we do our sectioning um, meetings. And just the number of students who um, requests their first request or their um, three alternative um, requests, we can see that the numbers are huge. Um, I would say definitely in the, in the business um, um, departments, there's a lot of um, interest in that. And um, the, the television um, courses are increasing again as well. So there's, you can see that um, I don't know, there's a, there's um, definitely the, the interest um, you know, increases or decreases. I, I don't know why, every, every few years, but I would definitely say are, the, the more um, offerings that we, that we put out there, you can see that there's a greater interest. And then there's a decline in other classes just because the students will choose.
Gravitate toward, yeah. And I think I've heard from parents that, you know, other districts are able to offer X, Y, or Z. Why don't we offer that? And I think we would love to offer as much as we could as education changes, but we just do not have the space to do that.
Correct.
Because the, the other, you know, four courses, you know, math, English, that we have to offer, those are taking up a lot of the space already. So we don't have the ability to add all these things that are kind of trending and the new way to provide students with opportunities. So I think this, you know, we keep hearing this same story over and over. It's a space issue and we're not able to offer our students maybe things that local districts near us are offering.
Yeah, it's, it's a space, it's a space issue, number one for sure. Um, that's probably the primary issue. I think the other thing is around staffing and keeping class sizes down. That balance between the two. Uh, right now I think our class sizes are, and we've seen this in the class size report, are really reasonable. I think we have really great class, class sizes results for the committee and the town members who uh, support the tax base. I think that's, that's been very good. Uh, in order o- offer more electives, you either have to hire class size or you have to hire more staff.
Right.
So, we have to figure out what we want to do as a community. I think when you ask about students, are students getting what they want? I generally think yes. Um, we listen to student proposals. I think we heard loud and clear around the business program, which we, I know this is a few years back, Mrs. Fritz, um, about the number of students that go off to business school and have no business experience before and they realize like, I'm not sure I want to do this. We owed it to the students in the community to, to address that prior to an investment in a college or university. So, we continue to build that out. And I'm also understanding the trend that uh, providing students an opportunity to do something that isn't college. Provide some skills and test the waters prior to uh, that. I know Mr. Wensky, your, your daughter attended high school and she's at Johnson and Wales in, in culinary and yeah, that's, I mean, we, she had some experience at the high school that probably supported that. And that's good. It was a full Monty, no. But a taste of it to see what it's like was, you know, was certainly helpful, I'm sure. Uh, and that's what we need to do and continue to build out for, for all students, whether they're going on to college or university or they're going to enter the workforce. And continue to build partnerships with people in the community that will hire our students knowing that they have a quality education. Our students will be reliable, they'll show up on time and be prepared to work in our articu- in our articulate. So, I think that's a product that in terms of students' education that we provide the community and our students. And we've had a lot of success with it, whether students entered a workforce or they go off to the military or college and career, I mean, uh, or university rather.
And thank you, because I think I, every, I've been doing this for a while, you're always creative in what the resources you have with either space or staff. Um, you're always looking to make sure you're trending the way education is going. And it's a lot of work. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
Yeah, thank you for the report, for the creativity and the thought that you put into this every year. I always enjoy going through it. Um, I like how you've been able to weave in uh, CTE within some of these changes. Uh, the internships and the flexibility around opening that up to more students, I think is, is great. Um, I also like the leadership opportunities that you've opened up, uh, obviously selfishly in, in the cooking space. As you mentioned, my daughter I think would have seized on that opportunity had it been available, but I, she did take advantage of, I think, pretty much every foods course. And that has led to a lot of her early success uh, in college, which has been great to see. But, you know, I think this gives them early exposure to see if this is something they want to uh, you know, expand on as a career and maybe they find out maybe it's not for them, right? But they have the opportunity to experience either the internship, the job shadow, the leadership opportunities within a space that they think uh, could be something that they want to pursue. So, uh, yeah, definitely appreciate all the work that goes into it. As was mentioned, certainly space constraints probably occupy your everyday, right? Including how you build these proposed changes. Uh, you need to be somewhat of a magician to figure out how to add a course and where you're going to put it, you know? And uh, I really appreciate the work that goes into this. So, uh, thank you so much. Dr. Sawyer, further comments?
Thank you. I certainly echo all the uh, kudos the school committee has passed along and, and certainly all the questions and feedback we'll, we'll take under advisement. Uh, in terms of the uh, making sure we provide, you know, a, a vibrant and varied uh, course of studies beyond the core programming that, you know, every high school is required, of course, to provide and it's been, and that, you know, every high school is required, of course, to provide and it's, and communities would expect us to provide. There, there are a lot of different elements that different students can find something that they're really connected with. Sometimes that can turn into, uh, a, a future course of study for them beyond high school and even a profession. Uh, sometimes they can turn into things they're interested in for hobbies or just elements of, you know, whether it's continuing with music or theater or visual arts, photography, whatever it might be. There, there are so many different elements and we're very proud of the range and the scope of, of the program of studies. And I know it's a lot of work and I appreciate the high school leadership teams, uh, thinking, uh, around bringing good ideas forward. And absolutely, you know, if we had more capacity, there would be ways to, to do even more. And hopefully over time, we'll be able to, to build that out, um, both literally and figuratively. Just briefly, cause obviously we'll be coming back to this, uh, point, I, I wanna make sure that there's clarity in terms of the graduation requirement piece. There's, there's two elements in Massachusetts that are required for students to receive a public high school diploma. Uh, one is to meet the local graduation requirements set by the local school committee. The second is to meet what is known as the state required competency. That they're proven to be competent to have a high school diploma in Massachusetts. Up until now, that is, uh, for large and significant number of years, that has been passing three different MCAS tests in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and whichever science they chose to take, um, in certain particular sciences. We have been advised by the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that as a result of the ballot question passing, the MCAS test is no longer applies, including for this current class of twenty twenty-five. And that local districts are expected to determine what it is they are doing to prove that they have met the state competency. Which is in addition to whatever local requirements there are. Mr. Buzilla referred to a meeting we, we have coming up tomorrow morning. Uh, we're reviewing what some options would be for that to look like. I think that we're going to be bringing forward sort of a two-step process. One would be something in the short term, to be really clear and fair to the current seniors, to make sure that it's clear what they, you know, have already in the vast majority of cases have already done, has met that competency, because as reflect the state frameworks. One very, you know, small example would be if students took math classes but never, which wouldn't happen, of course, but never had any algebra. The state would say, well, that doesn't meet the competency because the state frameworks say that were tested on MCAS required some knowledge of algebra. So that's just one example of something that the coursework, we'd say this meets the requirement, has to meet some state benchmarks. That's the work we'll do and kind of in the first step, making sure our current senior class in a fair way understands have they met those competencies. And if there's any that that's a concern, that they have an opportunity between now, um, and the end of May, that they're, they have an opportunity to do so. Assuming that everything else is in place. Secondly, it's obviously a good opportunity for us to review our local graduation requirements. And doing something along those lines that ultimately results in some recommendations and determination by the school committee of any revisions you want to make to those. And, you know, and then what would the process be to implement those? Cause obviously students are already well into their high school career versus students might be coming new into the high school. How do you phase something like that in that might be coming online in different phases for different classes of students may be something that we'd have to consider. That's a much larger project and something obviously we wanna give due consideration to. So the, in the short term, we have to make sure that state competency piece is well articulated and clear. And that's something we'll be certainly be bringing to the policy subcommittee in the near future and then to this full body.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is under policy. It is, uh, second reading and vote for the bullying prevention and intervention policy and plan. Uh, first readings of an updated bullying prevention and intervention policy, school committee policy seven one two. As well as an updated bullying prevention and intervention plan were presented at the school committee meeting on December eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four. The drafts were posted for public viewing and feedback in advance of planned votes by the school committee at tonight's meeting. Ms. Boucher, Ms. Reefer, members of the policy subcommittee, uh, and the policy and plan drafts are enclosed in our packet. With that, it would up to Ms. Reefer.
Thank you. Um, so following our last school committee meeting on December eighteenth, when we did the first reading. Um, Dr. Sawyer did include a blurb in his December twentieth superintendent's update, uh, soliciting some feedback on our district's bullying policy. We did receive feedback from one family. Um, the subcommittee met and we heard the feedback we received. And taking some of that feedback into consideration, um, some of that feedback is reflected in the, in our policy. In addition to some of that feedback, we did add that we will be reviewing our bullying and prevention plan as well as any forms, templates that we have. We're gonna review that and update that every two years, just to say, um, up to date with that. Um, we did have, um, a few suggestions that we ultimately decided not to follow, um, and add into the policy. I do just wanna touch a little bit on those. Um, one was to update language to add, um, zero tolerance. Uh, we decided not to include the term zero tolerance. We did review, um, our policy and our plan with our legal counsel. And they felt our decision to explicitly include harassment, intimidation, bullying, or cyberbullying of any student will not be tolerated was appropriate for our policy. That is a, even though we're not adding no, a zero tolerance as a district, we don't, we do not tolerate, um, any of those. We also, um, were asked if we would change the verbiage of promptly. Um, when it comes to initiating an investigation, um, and they wanted a little bit more definition of a twenty-four to forty-eight hour, uh, window. And we've decided that within our policy, we have that the investigation shall be initiated as soon as possible after the allegation is received. Under normal circumstances, the investigation will be completed within fourteen school days from the date of the report. If extenuating or complex circumstances require a longer period to complete the investigation sufficiently in order to make a fair determination, the principal and assistant principal will communicate with the alleged target, target, alleged aggressor and their parents slash guardian. Our legal counsel has reviewed our policy and plan and agrees, um, with what we have included. I do think it's worthwhile to say that I know that this is being done. Um, it is worthwhile to repeat. But as a committee, um, we expect that when a concern is raised, whether it's at the high school, the middle school, the elementary schools, it's reported to the district, whatever it may be, that it's addressed as timely as possible under normal circumstances. There's of course going to be times when we don't have normal circumstances and it's extenuating. And it takes a little bit longer to look at, um, a concern. And that the expectation is if that happens, that that will be communicated back to a family and explained as to why it's taking longer than normal. And then we also feel that communication is important. And I appreciate the time that it took for the family to sit down and gather their thoughts and provide us with some really good feedback. And taking into some of the conversation that was had, um, we are going to look at how are we better able to engage families when we have any policy that's coming up, putting the policy out, making sure people know it's there, and also being able to take feedback in. Because any feedback that we have for the bullying policy or really anything that we touch, um, only helps us better with the district for all of our students. So, um, that is where we stand. Again, our legal counsel did go over this with us. I don't know if Ms. Boucher wants to add anything before we open it up to everybody else.
Sure, just a, a couple of things. Thanks, Rachel. Um, we've also revised the policy to include, uh, references to other school committee policies. So, um, we believe that by referencing those other policies, um, such as regulations for conduct of students, responsibilities of students, internet acceptable use, teen dating violence, and regulations for the conduct of staff, that we don't, by having these references in the, the new policy, that we don't need to, um, in- include language from those policies, within the, the new policies. So they're, they're referenced and incorporated by reference. Additionally, I just wanted to, uh, bring to the attention of the community that we are going to be posting on Schoology, the form for students to be reporting incidents of bullying. Um, that way it's more accessible to students. It's not, they won't have to go to the, um, this, the district website to try to find it. We think this will make it easier and more accessible. Those were, um, I guess we can open it up to feedback from the rest of the.
Questions, comments?
The, the only comment I would ask, um, under reporting, I think it would be good, once something is reported, that there's some mechanism that the person who reports the bullying incident is, uh, under, knows it was received. In, in like twenty-four to forty-eight hours, or twenty-four to seventy-eight hours, or like a read receipt, like they are automatically, once it's submitted. I don't know if the software is able to do it, that there is, there, it's acknowledged that it has been received by the district date and time. I think that would help at least the person who's submitting it understand the district has received it on this date at this time.
Just a clarification on that. So you're saying like, just almost like a, on a timestamp, but like some, like automated acknowledgement through the form?
Form, right, right. Yeah. So that there is an acknowledgement. We have it, this is the date. And then it just to have that as, as it goes through the process, this is the date it was received. I think that is a courtesy for who's ever submitting the, um, report.
Questions, comments?
I don't know. Uh, do we wanna talk about that suggestion?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I think that makes sense. I think it's fair for people when you submit forms. I don't know. You feel like it's like a, a survey document, like is someone gonna look at it? I, I don't know. Dr. Sawyer, does that seem like a reasonable way to? I don't know what software we're using, so I just wanna, I didn't wanna move on from that.
I mean, it's not only software. I mean, the plan says it can be received orally, it can be received by email, it can be received in lots of different, uh, forms. Um, I certainly will defer to the policy subcommittee in terms of their, uh, understanding of our, our legal counsel's recommendation around, uh, you know, what, uh, level of timeline to put into the policy itself. Certainly the expectation is that, uh, if someone makes a report, that someone is going to get back to them that it's been received. And, and that, uh, you know, there certainly is a timeline, uh, to follow based on the updated policy. But, um, certainly I, I would, uh, wanna defer to the, the subcommittee in terms of their thoughts around implementing something that is, uh, you know, with a, with a specific timeline. I certainly would, uh, want to consider, uh, workdays, although I know, you know, our, our staff tries to be very responsive. I know we had, uh, something that came in about five PM on Friday that I happened to see. And I know that the principal happened to call that person at about six PM on a Friday, but that's not always gonna be the reality. In forty-eight hours from five PM on Friday, you know, is not going to, would then you'd be outside of your policy if you put something like that in there. So, you know, some language that talks about receiving, uh, you know, in addition to that, in that section about, um, you know, promptly, uh, responding. That it'll be, you know, will be provided with notice or, or confirmation of receipt. Something along those lines, I thought certainly could be, would be personally perfectly fine. I just think sometimes depending on the circumstances, it can get tricky in terms of what, I, I don't wanna give unrealistic expectations.
Right, I agree. Yeah. I think it's, mine is just that receipt. It's just that it was received. So the person submitting in whatever way, shape, or form, it has an acknowledgement it was received. And I think, I don't know what the language would be around business days and, you know, after hours, things like that can be added. Just so that they know it was received by the district.
I think, I think also just, I, I agree that we should have that it was received. I think, again, we would have to talk to the legal counsel about it. But in terms of keeping things consistent, because our policy does have that an investigation would be done within fourteen school days. We would probably wanna keep, instead of a forty to, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, it would probably be like a two. I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna come up with the actual timeframe here, but a school day basis. Because if something were to come in at five PM on a Friday, we don't necessarily have the expectation that it's gonna be worked on over the weekend.
Right, exactly.
Again, I think we'd have to go back. But I think having the acknowledgement that something was received. Right?
Yeah, if I can just add too. I mean, I, I think the fourteen days piece is important, right? To give the time needed to investigate what's coming in. Certainly the form would lend itself to, uh, you know, having some type of automated or like some, some acknowledgement, like, hey, we've received it. Follow up, uh, maybe, you know, some other communication about, you know, policy or whatever. The challenge I see is, you know, where that, uh, request or that, that submission is coming in, if it's outside of the form.
Right, exactly.
Cause there could be some other extenuating circumstances that, you know, maybe block, uh, that.
It could be only for the form. If, if person uses the form, that might be the only way that they get this receipt for it.
Yeah. Cause I know sometimes we talk in, in, in policy or other forums about, you know, putting, uh, like an actual, like timeframe on it. Is, is part of the process or should it be part of the policy?
Cause if someone's calling, if they're calling into the district, they're speaking to a principal or superintendent, they, they've already got receipt then. They, they know that their call has been received. So it's more around a written or if it's an email form or if it's the form itself, that's part of this policy.
Yep.
I'm not sure about putting a timeframe on it. I think receipt.
Yeah, just a receipt.
An acknowledgement of receipt, I can see, but I don't know that I wanna, um.
That makes sense.
Put a timeframe on it.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it, if it's even something references, you know, submitting through the form, this is what the expectation would be in terms of the, you know, confirmation that it's been received.
We're making sure that if we're doing that, if the form has that, and then yes, an email that we just say, yes, we've received it. But if it was a verbal, there just needs to be consistency across the board, that yep, documented, got it.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
May I propose that just in something for our consideration? It seems as though the incident reporting as a form to download comes up in the plan, but not the policy. Well, it's referenced many ways, um, that I think, and I'm gonna defer to my colleagues, please, um, but that it seems like it's on page eight of fifteen in the plan, um, if I have it correctly. And, and maybe there's a way, Ms. Fritz, to update, to have the policy sort of be voted on, but I encourage that the plan could include something like this. Cause we're, we're getting to something specific about timelines, the type of, if you're reporting, obviously if somebody picks up the phone and calls the principal, that's one thing. Or that a student says something to a staff person, that's gonna look and, you know, need a read receipt for a conversation, we don't think. But, but we might want to actually generate, this conversation happened and we're looking into it, right? There might be some reasons to also document that. So I'd be, I'm wondering if maybe we want to, um, uh, move forward with the policy as written and suggest an edit to the plan. Might get into some of those details with a couple of sentences that, to your point, maybe you don't wanna wordsmith right now. I also agree that because you could report in a lot of different ways and a lot of different times, we should acknowledge your receipt. And that, and then there could be a couple of ways that could happen. I, I think that might be a sensible way to, um, get to the concern. I think you're trying to get it, Ms. Fritz, that people shouldn't feel as if something goes into the ether and they, in fourteen days they hear. That's clearly not the intent here and folks are supposed to be engaged. But, uh, um, maybe we could make an edit to the plan. And that way would allow us, I think, Mr. Wensky, just go, go forward and vote on the policy tonight.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Any, any further comments or questions on that approach? So we would do one vote tonight and then future meeting, once we've kinda gone through the.
Could I just ask Ms. Wensky, just listening to the, the feedback, um, if you bear with me for one moment. If I'm understanding what I think people are agreeing would like to see, and, and maybe it could be simple enough to do this evening, but if it needs more time, that's fine.
Yeah.
But in terms of, um, uh, I think the, what I'm hearing is that the confirmation that it's been received is the, uh, the key piece. I guess the first portion I think that could work, and I'm, I'm looking at on, in the plan, cause I would, I would agree, I think the policy, it, it probably is covered. But in the plan itself, I'm looking at the, near the top of page eight, under Roman numeral five A, at the end of the first paragraph. It talks about templates will be reviewed every two years when the plan is reviewed. The possibility of potentially adding language along the lines of when a report is made, the person making the report will receive confirmation, uh, that it has been received. And then whatever language you wanna add to that. But if, that is sort of the key piece that is making it clear of what the responsibility is for the district and what the person making the report can expect. And, and, uh, again, I, I, I appreciate being mentioned that it could come in a lot of different ways. It could come from a young child, it could come from, you know, in terms of the, uh, but I, I think that that's language that would bolster, I think, with the, the, the question that Ms. Fritz is raising about making sure someone hears back that it has been, uh, received by the district and will be, the district, then we'll be taking steps.
Yeah. Can you say that one more time, Dr. Sawyer? I think I, I think I liked it, but I say one more time.
Yeah, the language I, I just wrote was when a report is made, uh, the person making the report, uh, will receive confirmation that it has been received, uh, by the school.
I'm comfortable with that edit.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, so we'll.
Then pull back from that for just one second. I just wanna really appreciate the subcommittee, the. Then pull back from that for just one second. I just wanna really appreciate the subcommittee, the, um, the family that engaged with us. I think this is a complicated topic. I also very much appreciate that, I could rest right now trying to wordsmith about how to, how to do this. A policy in and of itself is an important foundational piece to get at the broader issues of safety and culture and what we're trying to, to get at here for all of our students. I, I think the intent, um, and I support it, to reference some of our other documents, because in no one document, our, our policy, or frankly, even, you know, we, we, we think about the number and volume of paper that we sort of put out or, or documents, is, no, no one of them does it comprehend, does it sort of hold all of the values we have. So whether it's about staff conduct, or student conduct, or teen dating violence, and there will be others for which this has a, a Venn diagram that intercepts with this important topic. But, uh, it's, it's important. I think people have put, um, um, some really nice thought into this. And, and I am very supportive with the idea that this needs to get reviewed on a, on a, on a more regular basis. Uh, I noted that, that added every couple of years, and I, and I think that's important, 'cause this issue's gonna continue to change and we're gonna wanna put more things in. And maybe the policy's gonna feel pretty, pretty good, and maybe the plan is where we need to make edits, until there'll come a point where the policy also needs to get, get updated. So I just wanna both appreciate my colleagues here and those who have engaged on this, and I'm, I'm sure, Dr. Sawyer, many of your staff spend time on this topic, because it's, it's important. It's important that, that students feel, um, safe and they feel like they are supported by the district. It's important that we think about the due process rights of all of our students throughout this process. So I just wanna appreciate the complexity that we're trying to tackle here and how hard it is to do in any policy. And I think we've done, done a good job getting, getting as best as we can to thread, to thread that needle. So thank you to, to all of those. Um, I'm having Mr. Wensky to make a motion if you, if you like, but if there's more comments.
Yeah, uh, any further comments or questions? No, that's good. Um, okay, so we'll take two votes, right? Um, so I will take, uh, need a motion that the committee vote to approve policy seven, one, two, bullying prevention and intervention as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Um, the second vote, um, will need a motion that the committee vote to approve bullying prevention and intervention plan as amended.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for all the work that you put into that. Thank you.
Ms. Wensky, can I add one more thing? Thank, thank you to the committee, thank you to the subcommittee, to, uh, Ms. Rieffert and Ms. Boucher, thank you for the, the conversation this evening. Uh, within the next week, I, I plan to send two different communications. One is to our staff, uh, as we always do when something's updated that, uh, they previously have had information on, uh, to make sure they're aware of the, the final updated policy and updated plan and remind them of their responsibilities regarding preventing bullying and intervening, where it may be either discovered or, or suspected. Uh, because it is, uh, to certainly underscore the points made earlier, it's a critically important piece in terms of the safety and, and of our students and the, the culture and climate of our schools. Um, I will also be sending a communication to families to make them aware of the final updated policy and plan. Uh, reminder how to report any concerns, emphasizing the importance of prevention intervention. Uh, and I certainly am going to be specifically referencing, and we talked about this when it was presented, uh, previously at the prior meeting, uh, you know, some updated language about different issues that didn't exist, even when this law passed a number of years ago. Uh, particularly around artificial intelligence, deep fakes, um, issues that we certainly would want to prevent. Uh, issues that have been really difficult for a lot of school districts across the country in the last year plus. And, uh, you know, work that we're continuing to do in different ways. I appreciate you've heard from our schools, some of our school improvement plans, some of the work that our schools have been doing around student behavior, especially in prevention, specifics from the middle school, looking at issues around bullying, online, uh, behavior, uh, both for students and for families, um, that will continue to be important. The education and prevention element is really key, um, and that's something we are, uh, you know, engaged in right now, also with the artificial intelligence, uh, study committee that we just launched recently, and there'll be a report for that, uh, later in the spring. Uh, but, uh, I'll also be sure when I meet with our leadership team, uh, to make sure that not only we'll ask parents to have a conversation with their students, but making sure that in the ways that are appropriate, our school leadership reminds students of the importance of speaking up and letting a trusted adult know if there's a concern, uh, we know that healthy school culture is, that's really key. Um, so that's another element that will be important. So I just wanted to mention that those communications will be going out in the near future. And again, I thank the, the, you all for your support and particularly the policy subcommittee, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is under finance and operations. It's a report on fee and tuition rate comparisons. Uh, Mr. Girardi is here, uh, to present information regarding the fees related to busing, uh, athletics and music lessons. Uh, a report with a history of fee levels, current rates, and illustrations of potential future rates is enclosed. Slide deck, uh, is gonna provide some comparable data from other districts regarding bus transportation and athletic fees from other districts, uh, which is also enclosed in our packet. Uh, floor is yours, Mr. Girardi.
Thank you. Uh, we are deep into our planning for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, um, school department budget. Uh, as we're working through, uh, costs that are associated with the, you know, the appropriated budget, uh, we also look at revenue streams as well. Um, and there are two categories of revenues that, um, that will impact, uh, our final recommendation to school committee and ultimately the vote by, um, town meeting members in May. Um, two categories that we'll look at, or we'll look at, look at one category tonight, but there's two categories of fees and tuitions. Um, and for the, I think the public at large who might be watching, um, you know, two important things to point out here, are these two categories. One are fees and tuitions that provide partial funding, but do not cover the entire cost of services. Um, and these include bus transportation fees, athletic fees, um, and preschool tuition. And then we do have fees and tuitions that cover the entire cost of the service, um, since they're auxiliary services provided by the school department for the convenience of students and families. Um, and these include extended day, uh, extended school care tuition and music lesson fees. Uh, this evening, we will focus primarily on the, the fee categories, which are bus transportation, athletics, and music lessons. So we will begin with, uh, the bus transportation fee. Uh, this chart here shows, uh, that, you know, a ten-year history of bus fees where we currently, uh, our current bus fee is at three hundred dol, uh, three hundred and twenty dollars, uh, you know, per fee, with a nine hundred and sixty-dollar family cap for the current fiscal year. And you can see the historicals going back to fiscal year two thousand sixteen. We last adjusted our fees, uh, to begin the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, uh, year. Um, and we've been at three hundred dol, uh, three hundred and twenty dollars since. And you can see that our total, um, fiscal year twenty-five budgeted revenue is seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You know, which is about, you know, one-fifth or twenty percent of the overall transportation cost for this, for the fiscal year. So we'd like to take a look at what, um, our, um, you know, surrounding, uh, AssetBet Valley collaborative communities are doing. You know, there are a number of these communities where they do not charge a bus fee, and then there are those who do charge a bus fee. Um, we're currently the highest bus fee amongst our AssetBet Valley collaborative, um, at three hundred and twenty dollars. And, uh, this time around, we, we decided to do a median and a mean just to give us a sense of, uh, what those numbers look like. The median for, uh, bus fees is two hundred and fifty dollars, and the mean is two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, it's also important to note that regional school districts, they are not allowed to charge, uh, a bus fee due to the regional transportation state reimbursement. So if you're looking at, you know, Berlin, Boylston, Northboro, Southboro, Noshoba, uh, those districts cannot charge a fee. This slide here is just an exercise at showing, um, some impact on, uh, bus transport, uh, bus transportation fees if we were to increase fees to generate more revenue, or if we were to decrease a fee, uh, to come into, say, more in line with what the AssetBet Valley group would be. Um, so our current, uh, fee is three hundred and twenty dollars. You know, if we were to do slight increases of five and ten dollars, uh, you can see the difference in the right-hand column of, uh, additional, um, revenue that could be generated if we were to raise the fees to those amounts. And then on, you know, moving in the other direction, if we were to decrease fees, you can see what the impact would have, um, as to what we currently are, um, what our current revenue is for the bus fees. And with the mean and the median, um, listed, uh, down below. And again, just an exercise, you know, there's no recommendations this evening as to, uh, what, you know, what the fees, uh, would be. Um, but again, to take an early look at what some impact on the budget would have as we're going through the budget process. So the next category we'll look at is the athletic fee. Um, our high school athletics has a three hundred and twenty-five dollar fee, uh, you know, per sport. And there's a nine hundred and seventy-five dollar family cap for high school athletics. And you can see the ten-year historicals here with the last adjustment made for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, uh, year. Uh, also important to note is that there's, uh, you know, out of the nine hundred and thirty-five dollar family cap, uh, we do have students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch that has a, an adjusted cap of fifty dollars per sport with a hundred and fifty dollar family cap. And then Oak Athletics, we introduced the Oak Athletic Fee in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, and that fee has remained at a hundred dollars, uh, since, since the inception of that program. Uh, with a three hundred and fifty dollar, a three hundred dollar family cap and fifty dollars per sport, forty-five dollar cap per family for students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch. You know, the total budgeted revenue, uh, is three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Uh, for high school athletics, that represents about thirty-three percent of the total, uh, athletic program cost. Uh, for the middle school, it's twenty-three percent of the total cost. So these are the, the towns in our mid-watch league, and again, just to show where Shrewsbury falls within the, um, you know, the, the cost structure of, of our per-sport fee and how it relates to our, um, mid-watch, um, league. Uh, again, you know, there's some, these are our best effort, um, numbers for the per-sport fee, 'cause they do, they can adjust, uh, based on different models that the, the schools offer, depending on family caps, depending on how many, um, sports a, a student will play, uh, depending on what sport a student pay, uh, plays, there are different costs. But this is our best effort at kind of, uh, indicating what a per-sport fee would be for each of these different communities. And again, at the bottom, you'll see the median and the mean, the median at two hundred and fifty dollars, the mean at two hundred and forty-three dollars, and those are for communities that charge a fee. So it does not, um, factor in districts that do not have an athletic fee. And again, a similar exercise that we did to transportation is just to show where we are currently with our three hundred and twenty-five dollar high school athletic fee, um, and the budgeted revenue, and what we would see if, if we increased the fee by five or ten dollars, what the difference in revenue would be. And then if we were to reduce, uh, the fee, the impact that that would have, um, on the budget. For our middle schools, again, Shrewsbury, we charge one hundred, uh, dollars per sport fee. Um, for our mid-watch leagues who have, uh, who participate in middle school sports, um, the median is a hundred and sixty dollars per sport fee, the mean is a hundred and fifty-five dollars per sport fee, uh, for those who charge a fee. And again, similar exercise, if we were to, um, increase the fee to generate more revenue if needed, uh, you can see on the right-hand side what the difference would be, um, and then if we were to reduce what the, again, impact would be. Um, you know, with athletics, some of the kind of inflationary factors that we have to account for each year, you know, certainly the cost of, of the, uh, coaching stipends, and those get negotiated, and we're currently in negotiations with our, uh, Shrewsbury Education Association with, um, identifying what the, um, next contract will be with those fees. Bus transportation, again, is a six percent increase year over year, and we have to factor that into travel, uh, for our athletic program. Referee fees and, uh, things like facility rentals, if we're renting ice time and those sorts of things, all, um, increase. There's, you know, there's inflationary factors for each of those. So music lessons, again, this is a program that, uh, is, you know, fully funds itself. Uh, in two thousand twenty-four, we adjusted the fee to thirty-seven dollars per half hour. Um, you can see here what each of the thirty-minute, forty-five-minute, and sixty-minute lessons, uh, cost per semester. Um, the fees support one hundred percent of the instructor costs, and parents sign up on a semester basis and agree to pay for the fourteen lesson package. And some music fee rates for, uh, some similar communities. Uh, Shrewsbury, our previous rate was at thirty dollars and forty-nine cents per thirty minutes. Uh, the new rate, rate set in FY twenty-four, um, is thirty-seven dollars per thirty minutes. Uh, and you can see, you know, what the other, um, communities there charge for their thirty, forty-five, and sixty-minute lessons, uh, with the median and mean data down below in orange. Okay, so, uh, last year when we introduced fees, a question came up around, you know, how, how does financial assistance play a role in, um, in participation? And fees that are, are charged to families who may have or may be in need of financial assistance. Uh, again, this data was pulled from last year to give us one full year's worth of participation in our fee-based programs. Um, so it shows our, uh, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year data. We are seventeen point seven percent of SPS students identified as low income, and then how that impacts each of these different free areas. Um, transportation, about nineteen point eight percent of the program receive, receives financial assistance. Uh, athletics, eleven point seven percent, and music lessons, uh, six point four percent of the programs receives financial assistance in each category. Um, it's important to note that, uh, you know, we ask families to apply for the, uh, to submit the free and reduced lunch application, and that's what assists us in identifying them and allowing us to reduce the fees, uh, to which we showed, um, in some previous slides. So next steps, uh, we will review and process information provided by district management group as part of their Shrewsbury Public Schools Financial Review. Um, district management group is coming towards the end of their review and will be providing some, uh, feedback to us, uh, within the next few weeks. And we will use that feedback to help us understand, um, how, uh, you know, the fee revenues can support, uh, our, our budget needs moving, uh, into FY twenty-six and beyond. On February twelfth, Dr. Sawyer will make his initial budget recommendation, and then recommendation by Dr. Sawyer and vote by the school committee on fees prior to finalization of the budget recommendation, uh, to town meeting in May. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or, or take any feedback that the school committee may have around, uh, fees.
Thanks for the report. Uh, if I always any questions or comments?
Yeah, I wanna thank you for putting the time and energy into this. Um, certainly, as folks know, I've, I've raised some concerns about the, about our fees and our fee structure and the impacts that it may have on families and particularly their participation in programs that I think are sort of fundamental to education, uh, in, in many ways. So, um, something more, more data is, is always helpful, um, I think, as we move through the process, both with, um, our longer-term financial, um, planning for the district, sort of who we are, what we wanna be, what we think is an appropriate, um, education within, within the community of Shrewsbury, but also as we move through this year's budget. This is sort of a, to me, a multi-year conversation for us to have and not a, let's address this once and, and sort of fix it, uh, because, um, uh, we got here over time and it might take us a little time, time to, to fix it as well. I wonder though, the, um, um, because you've flagged it, one of the, the music fee, to me, sits in a slightly different space than the others, because you cannot participate in the music program with an instrument unless you're in, and unless you're in an extracurricular paid, paid program. And it does seem to be one in which we have the smallest percentage of, uh, students who have, who have a financial need. Um, and then there's a, gotta get the, I had one child who did it for a short period of time, we're not a musically inclined family. However, there's, you know, the, the, the fee there and sometimes the rental of the instrument is, is, as well on, on top of that. Do you know if, and maybe this is something we can look at again over time, I'm not, I don't need, I don't intend, nor do, do I think you are proposing that we figure this out tonight, there's no vote. this out tonight, there's no vote before us right now, but you proposed some other places where one could get private lessons, and comparably, you know, one could say we have a competitive rate for that cost, but other school districts, do they also have a similar plan? If you're in the band in Grafton or in Clinton, do you have to also be in a private lesson? Because there's two different ways to get at this problem. We could just say, your lessons need to happen in the school day, which will present a whole other issues for our principals and others, but is that a, is that a, is that a model that is common across our neighbor districts?
It does exist.
Okay.
So.
Only in like Wellesley and Sudbury? So those are, I look at as towns with a little more affluence, the ones that are mentioned? And so when I think about some of our, so I was wondering if you pulled those because they were the only ones that do it, or because they're the only ones you could find data for?
They're the ones that we could find data for.
Okay.
That's correct.
And do we think that some of our, in the, in sort of a little bit tighter circle around Shrewsbury or our Dart Districts, or some of the other ones that we tend to compare ourselves to, if they also have a program where the instrument is an, sort of the extracurricular is required as part of the enrolling in the course?
Sure. It's a fair question. I think I'll take some time to look into that a little bit deeper for you.
Thank you.
But I think that's an excellent question and can give us a little bit more kind of meat on the bone to chew on as we're making some decisions around this.
Yeah. I have no doubt, we tend to provide really great services at an efficient rate, no matter what we do. And so I have no doubt that our music rate compared to a private class, right, is a great offering. It's more that tie-in where music has always felt a little funny, where you can't be in the program unless you, unless you do this other piece. So thank you for putting some data together to help us as we sort of look at this and try to think about what's the right, what's the right balance to set.
Yeah, thank you very much for putting the report together. I like that we're getting a jump on this topic early, just to get a view of kind of where we sit in terms of fees. Always good to have that information out to the community. It's typically something we've reviewed towards the end of our budget cycle, but I do like that we've got an early read on kind of where we stand, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
I appreciate, again, the request of the school committee in terms of the budget process this year was to look at this in a little different lens, and that's something that will take some time over the development of the budget. So just getting the information here initially is good to have, and then over the course of the different deliberations in the coming months, you know, obviously at some point, I'll bring a recommendation to you and, you know, we'll need to set them, because that will have an impact on the budget, and obviously, at the point, we also have to let families know and start requesting people to pay them in the spring when we launch our transportation program, as we do each year in April. So again, appreciate all the work that Mr. Girardi's done, and we'll continue to bring information forward as the process goes forward.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is under New Business. It is an update on the Asset Valley Collaborative. The state law governing educational collaboratives requires four updates each year to member school districts. This is the second update this year. This update is to provide information regarding the approved financial audit of the Asset Valley Collaborative for fiscal year 2024, and a copy of that audit and annual report is enclosed. With that, I hand it over to Dr. Sawyer for an update.
Sure. Again, this is part of the requirements of the state for districts that belong to a collaborative and for the collaborative itself. The documents in your packet, you know, very short summary is that the collaborative had a very favorable audit from the, it's done every year, and that's something that I, you know, as a member of the Board of Directors representing Shrewsbury, I was present in the audit report from the accountant, and again, we're on solid financial footing as an entity, which is obviously what the news you want to get when you go through that. Beyond that, the report of the collaborative itself illustrates a lot of the different programming that they offer and provide to students from both the member communities as well as non-member communities who pay a higher rate to get access to those programs, some reference to some of the ways that, you know, districts benefit, and, you know, as I mentioned in the previous report, one key area that we're continuing to look at is transportation that they provide for our member districts, including Shrewsbury for out-of-district special education schools, and that will be, continue to be an area of focus for the Board of Directors. But if there are any questions, I might answer them, but these are, again, two documents that we're obligated and pleased to provide to the committee for the record.
Great. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
I'm excited.
Thank you for the update. All right. Onto the next item on our agenda, which is under the approval of minutes, the minutes for the school committee meeting held on December 18th, 2024, enclosed. Colleagues, any questions or visions or edits? Therefore, they'll be accepted as written. Okay, we do need to go into executive session tonight, so therefore, I need to request a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, purpose seven, open meeting law Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 22FNG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers' Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, purpose two. And D, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, federal and Massachusetts student record laws, purpose seven, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. Have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second, and roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Sharifahpour?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.